I'd like everyone to stand for the pledge of the flag, please. Okay, I'd like to start off by saying that on Saturday we lost one of our former mayors of the town and I'd like to read Judge Kenneth Wilcox's obituary if I could. "On Saturday, September 15, 2018, Judge Kenneth A. Wilcox's loving husband, devoted father and grandfather, dear friend, respected judge, passed away at his home at the age of 91. Judge Wilcox was born in Eden, New York, to Wilson Wilcox and Eleanor Hines. He served in the U.S. Navy in World War II. He graduated from University of Maryland in 1950 with a BS in accounting. He later attended University of Bonhamore School of Law where he graduated with a JD degree. He was admitted to the Maryland Bar in 1966 and began his law practice in Elton and was elected the mayor of Elton from 1967 to 1971." Judge Wilcox is the sixth photo there with his robe on. From 1971 to 72, he served as Cecil County Assistant State's Attorney. In 1973, Kenneth Wilcox was appointed as a district court judge and until his retirement in 1988, served as district court administration judge for the five upper counties of the eastern shore and a circuit court juvenile court judge. His public service was extensive, including the Quandas Club, the Boys Club, YMCA, Boy Scouts, the YMCA Rotary Club, the Cecil County Library, Cecil County SPCA, Elton Chamber of Commerce, Big Elk Creek Watershed Committee, just to name a few. In addition to his public service, Judge Wilcox was very active in historical organizations and programs. He served as one of the founding directors and later president of the Historic Elk Landing Foundation, which is a member of, he also was a member of the Sons of the American Revolution, Cecil County Historical Society and the General Society of the War of 1812. He is preceded in death by his wife of almost 70 years, Anne Fraser Wilcox, and daughter Julie Anne Wilcox. Judge Wilcox is survived by his two daughters, Lizbeth Reedy of Westchester PA and Lisa Wilcox of Hamilton, Georgia, and his two granddaughters, Sarah Reedy of Brooklyn, New York, and Stephanie Shriver of Athens, Georgia. The service will be held on Saturday, November 3, 2018, 11:00 AM at the Trinity Church, 105 Bridge Street, Elton, Maryland. Anyone in lieu of flowers, you can make contributions to the Historic Elk Landing Foundation in care of Hickson's Funeral on Stockton Street in Elton. I'd like to say that Judge Wilcox and myself probably got off to a little shaky start when I first served as town commissioner and town mayor the first go-round, but I'd have to say over the years, we actually did have a pretty good bond and I think not only did I respect him for his activities, that he did, I certainly feel that he always respected the town itself and he gave a lot for the town. So I'd like to ask everyone, if they could, let's bow our heads in a moment of silence Thank you. Anyone from the board have anything to add about Mayor Wilcox? If you'd like to say?
I extend my condolences to the family. There's gratitude.
Okay, minutes of September 5, 2018 meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So move.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report and payment of the bills. We have a motion to approve financial report and payment of the bills.
So move.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? I think I'll hold my discussion about this at the end. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next to them, we have a request from Minnehemnes Irish Pub to close 117, 118 West Main Street Municipal Parking Lot on October 13, 2018 for the Minnehemnes Third Annual Arts Festival. We received a letter and I'd like to read it out loud for everyone. Please accept this letter as a form of request to have the parking lot behind Minnehemnes Pub and Restaurant closed for the One Day Arts Festival. The festival will take place on October 13, 2018 and will run from 1:00 to 11:00 PM. The name of the event is Minnehemnes Third Annual Arts Festival and the beneficiary is the Cecil County Arts Council. The festival is inviting more than a dozen visual artists and up to 10 performing artists to celebrate a day to art who include live music, children's activities. The festival will allow our creative people to showcase their work and bring more families into town to attend an event that welcomes children. In addition to asking your permission to close the parking lot, I am hoping that some of you can join in a friendly cooking competition scheduled for that same day. Bring your best dish to enter in the celebrity cook-off for a friendly competition with your county colleagues. Thank you so much for the kind consideration for the parking lot. Along with that, we also have a request. We'll do, well, we'll just do one at a time here. I'd like to have a motion to close, allow the Minnehemnes Third Annual Arts Festival on October 13 and we'll be closing the parking lot.
I'll make a motion. We approve the closure of the parking lot.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the event? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Secondly, we received a letter from Ingrid Minnehemnes. Please accept this as a form of request to have an alcohol waiver in effect on the property known as Minnehemnes Pub and Restaurant for the One Day Arts Festival. The festival will take place on October 13, 2018, running from 1:00 to 11:00. Once again, the beneficiary is the Cecil County Arts Council. Do we have a motion to approve the alcohol waiver for that day?
So move.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. I don't know if you ladies wanted to add anything or not, or is it all good? You want to say something?
Me?
Yeah, if you want to.
Where do I, where do I come from?
You come on down, tell us who you are in the Cecil County Arts Council.
Anne Marie Hamilton, Cecil County Arts Council Executive Director. I just wanted to let you know the results of the Second Annual Arts Festival from last year. We had about 500 people. It was a little longer of an event, it was 10:00 AM till about 11:00 PM. The behavior of everyone was fantastic with the exception of the celebrity cook-off because it was incredible trash talking and elbow jabbing, but other than that, everybody was very well behaved. Last year, we had about 10 musicians and possibly a dozen artists. This year already, we have 30 vendors that have asked to come and then includes the children's activities, the bookmobile, the cone ice guy, so it looks like it's growing with enthusiasm and I still expect the bad behavior during the celebrity cook-off. And if anybody is interested in becoming a celebrity and entering the cook-off, I'll save you some elbow-jabbing space.
I think I might take you up on your invitation this year and I'd have to decide whether I want to make my world-famous ribs or my world-famous smoked turkey, so one of the two might happen.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Lou, you were on.
The first item I have is an alcohol waiver, but that's been addressed. My next item is the Second Amendment to the lease with the Historic Elk Landing Foundation. We have, I presented a Second Amendment to the President of the Historic Elk Landing Foundation who agreed and signed and executed the agreement. It relates to 20 acres of land that the town acquired in 2002 and subsequently leased to the Historic Elk Landing Foundation in 2003. I believe that the town is pursuing a elk landing park in that area, so the Historic Elk Landing Foundation agreed to relinquish their leasehold agreement with, or leasehold interest in 20 acres of property and I would recommend the board accept the Second Amendment to the lease with Historic Elk Landing Foundation.
We have a motion to accept the Second Amendment to the lease.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion, seconding discussion on this. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Next item I have, Jean Minter should be somewhere in the audience there, Jeanie. We have the Maryland Community Development Block grant agreement with the $800,000 awarded to build or help build the neighborhood community center and the mayor would have to sign that agreement and agree to the obligations required by this grant, so I would recommend that the board authorize the mayor to sign this agreement and accept the obligations under this program.
Do we have a motion to accept the grant agreement, MD 19CD-28, for the amount of $800,000? We have a motion? And a second. Any discussion on this community grant? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries. Getting close, guys, we're getting close.
Yeah, I asked Jean to come to say any questions, if you have any questions about the grant.
The only question I have is what are we going to send out for?
It'd be like, uh... They asked me, uh, Jean was absent, so I requested from the Department of Housing and Community Development, the labor standards that would have to be included, so they sent me about 70 pages to review of the, out of the non-page proposal, 70 pages and somewhere along that line would be incorporated or the compliance, or compliance standards in that. So we're very close. Jean selected the portions of that compliance package that has to win the RFP, so we'll be selecting dates for the, I think you have the environmental thing first?
Yeah, environmental review has to be completed and I think that will finish up sometime in October and we just can't spend money before the environmental review's completed, but I think we can go ahead and start getting out the project.
Okay. I was worried about that environmental review. We'll be putting that out probably in the next couple of weeks.
Fantastic. Thank you. Jean, thank you so much. Okay, anything else, Lou?
That's it.
All right, I had, I've got a list of things here this evening. First, I'd like to recognize Bob Mefly, I see our councilman from the county in the back of the room. Bob, thank you so much for attending and, of course, we also have, I would say, our future councilman, Bill Couse, sitting in the front of the room here also. It's great to see you, Bill, and it's always great to see members of the Planning Commission. We've got two members of the Planning Commission here tonight. I think we've got a couple of members from Elk Landing here also tonight, a couple of new small businesses in town. I love it, I love to see when our room is full. I also wanted to mention, we received an email that the Elton Marching Band won their first competition of the year and I think the, when I saw the amount of bands that were in it, this was not a small competition. They went down to, was it Henry? I'm trying to remember, I should have printed out the email, I normally have it here in front of me. But congratulations to the Elton Marching Band for winning the first competition of the year. The, and I, I want to talk about a movie that I had an opportunity to watch and I recommend that all town staff watch this movie on Netflix if you have it. The name of the movie is called All the Queen's Horses and I'm not sure if anyone knows what All the Queen's Horse is about, but it shocked me. I mean, it was a movie that just, it was a documentary, it's a true story, it's based on the town of Dixon, Illinois. Dixon, Illinois has a population of 16,000 people, very similar to the town of Elton. The comptroller treasurer, for X amount of years, was quite frankly swindling money from the town. $53 million that she was able to get from the town in like a 10 or 15-year window. It was absolutely amazing. Now, I want to let everyone know that we have safeguards in place here in the town of Elton, but I also want to let you know that I think it's a very important Netflix movie for all of us to take a look at because this only happened in 2012, so it wasn't like it was in 1812. So it hadn't happened all that long ago and it was a very powerful documentary. She was taking her money and she had, she was the comptroller of the town and she started one of the finest quarter horse stables in the world, right there in Dixon, Illinois, but that's where her money was going. And she wasn't taking 15 or 20,000 dollars at the time, she was taking lumps of money like 400,000 dollars at a time. And she had created, she was able to create a false vendor, but she handled everything and that doesn't happen here in the town where one person handles all the setting up of the account, the shipping of the account, but they handled a lot of money, but who was our accounting firm?
Clifton-Larson Allen.
They were the ones involved.
Really?
So, they were.
They were?
No, they weren't.
I'm just letting you know, Clifton, as soon as I watched the movie, it was Clifton Larson was involved, now, they were the auditors.
I think I understand. Oh, that's funny, they brought in, town brought in.
The town brought in Clifton Larson to audit and they were the town's auditors for years, just like we use them and a lot of municipalities use them. And what it, what it opened up our eyes to is that there was no foul play by the auditor's eyes because there was an account open, there was a payment in, it was all done correctly. But Clifton Larson had to pay back, I think it was close to 30 million dollars to the town of this money that was taken. So it was real interesting that they were involved in it, but that's why I wanted to bring it up, but I think it's a really entertaining documentary, it was an eye-opening one and who would have ever thought that a town with a similar budget to the town of Elton, similar amount of people, could, someone could take that kind of money?
I'm surprised that they generated that kind of revenue. As a town that's small, that's a lot of money.
It was, it was, they started falling, they started having to pay all people, they were falling in deficits, but it was a really good, it was an eye-opening show and if anyone gets an opportunity, it's on Netflix, it's called All the Queen's Horses, so, very interesting. I, you would never think something like that would happen. I'll get to you in a minute. When you're, I know you've got a lot to say tonight.
Are there any horse stables in town?
There's not, there you go, perfect.
I was going to ask you. I was going to ask you if you have any questions.
Last week, I had a breakfast meeting with Superintendent of Cecil County Schools, Jeff Lawson, and he met with several of the mayors and it was a very informed breakfast. I think that after I left that meeting and I read a lot about school security and the budgets, I think that, I think the issue is the school board has a tough time selling this to the public or giving them the correct information because when he gave a presentation, quite frankly, I could see why they were in need of what they, what they're asking for. That's not our issue here, but I thought it was really interesting. I just think that they need a better job of selling some of their things to the public. Last Thursday, we went down to Chesapeake Inn, the Cecil County Economic Development had a meeting and they invited commercial brokers from around the area. We also met with the executive, or the director of economic development with the Philadelphia chapter as well as the Bonhamore chapter, so it was good to hear their perspectives of what's going to possibly happen to Cecil County with us being right in between of both. So it was really a good meeting and the Cecil County Economic Development Department did a great job of putting that on. Today, I had my first tour ever of Colonial Metals and they're outside of the town of Elton, but it was interesting to get to meet with the president and the staff of that company and they are a good, I think that they truly are a good business, good neighbor to our community and I've been trying to go to some of these businesses a little bit on the outskirts of town, but we do service them with water. So Colonial Metals gets their water from the town of Elton, so I thought it was important. And a couple of weeks prior, went to North of Brumman and met with those individuals and they also get their water from the town of Elton through the Triumph Industrial Card. I wanted to let the board know that I'm going to be wearing a new hat. I've been appointed to the Immaculate Conception School Board, you may have read that in the paper a couple of weeks ago, but we have our first meeting tomorrow night, so I'm not sure what I got myself into, but I'm going to be there for representing, I guess, the town's interests in Immaculate Conception School, but I'm happy to be there. I would be, I wanted to mention that on September 28, the Elk Landing Foundation will be having a craft beer festival. If you didn't attend it last year, you missed out. It was a wonderful event, X amount of dollars you could go down there and partake and a lot of wonderful craft beers. State Line actually donated, at the end of the day, they donated all of their beer that was there to benefit the Elk Landing Foundation. So it was a wonderful event and hopefully I'll see everyone down there. I think it's from 6 to 8?
Four 30 to 7.
If you've been there, 4:30 to 7, I would have had you miss out, but from 4:30 to 7, it's going to be a nice event for everybody. On October 4, I'm going to have the opportunity to go visit the White House. I'm going to go on a White House tour. There was several mayors in the state of Maryland that were invited and I could not not go.
Does the governor want to be there with you?
I don't think so. I think they have a select amount of mayors that are going and I was invited to go, I don't know if I, what our purpose or our role is, but I'm looking forward to at least going to the White House for the first time. On October 6, we have, we have our Elton Grand Prix will be in town. Last year, I think the Grand Prix raised over 20,000 dollars for Union Hospital, but that's on October 6. So I have a full listing of items here, I know that there's still a lot more to talk about that I left on the table. Mary Jo, I'm going to leave the floor to you.
Okay. You've got a lot of them, Rob. I do want to take a moment just to thank all the sponsors and volunteers for this past weekend with Fall Fest. We can't do it without them and there's a lot of volunteers that make this happen and it was a great weekend, the weather held up, we prayed and prayed and it worked, so, but I do want to thank everyone for that. Also, I think the only thing the mayor forgot is the Halloween Parade in October will be October 26. We probably already have about 60 people registered, so that's a big thing in downtown Elton, the nighttime parade has just gotten bigger and bigger, so if you have children, grandchildren, or you want to get dressed yourself and enter, please join us or come down to watch. And that's all I have.
Very good.
I just want to commend the Elkland Lions for a job well done down at the Fall Fest. I know I had a great time, I've seen the citizens in Elton and not just in Elton, from all around, having a good time. I think our selection for the band was one of the greatest ones so far, they were a pretty good band, so I just want to say thank you to the Elkland Lions and our good staff.
Jean?
Okay, thank you. I'm not going to not congratulate you because it was on my list to do, but the Fall Fest was great, I was there both days and, and what was neat was each day was unique, it was completely different, but it was enjoyable both days and thank you for your hard work and gra, and please thank everybody else involved too because I know it took a big team, but you were a good leader on that, Mary Jo, as usual. It's good to be back, I don't know if anybody missed me or not, but I did want to take this opportunity to thank everybody for the prayers and the well wishes and the cards that I got, all of them were greatly appreciated and I think they really did lift my spirits and get me back here sooner than later. So thank you and I'm looking forward to digging in my heels and getting the bridge at Duller Avenue, a few other things that I really would want to work on, so thank you all.
Thank you, Jean. Charles?
I think it was very good that you had breakfast with Dr. Lawson, I think that he's going to be a vital, be a vital person with the Board of Education. Certainly on yesterday morning, he had some students gone over, questioned the master for the strategic plan that he had set forward. Yesterday afternoon, I was on the focus group in the afternoon with about 60 people from the community and business and I think last night, he met with parents, so he is trying to put the right foot forward and also he's done great measures in trying to put more activity for middle school age group children. Lastly, if you have not had the opportunity to visit Gulp Mountain, please do so, your tax dollars certainly paid for that building, it's a nice building, they have a lot of supplies like the smart boards in every room and things like that, so a plus up for the kids. Anne Marie Jo, you always do a good job and the staff have done it with you, so thank you very much for all that you've done. It speaks volumes for the town of Elton.
Thank you. This is the time of the meeting, we open up the floor for the public. Mr. Gettleman, come on down first and then I'm going to get Mrs. Clark right after you. Come on down, tell us what you've got tonight.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate, congratulate the town on Fall Fest. I had a fantastic time there. My chess club buddy and I went to every booth and we walked away with enough trinkets to buy Manhattan Island at today's prices, so I just wanted to congratulate the town, fantastic, fantastic event. I do have to go through things, I'll try to go through things as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Please, one of you here in 12. I'll send that out to you. Thanks, sir. First of all, I went to Howard's Pond today.
Mr. Gettleman, what I'll do is, is I'm going to allow you to give your comments and then I'm going to have Lou George, our town administrator, actually send you a response back, so we won't respond to you tonight, but you go ahead and tell us your comments.
Okay.
You've got the floor, the floor is yours.
Okay, I'd like to go quick and, I went to Howard's Pond today, which is down west Main Street, past downtown, and it's a fairly large pond, I estimated at least four acres, maybe more, and I think that it's very underutilized for fishing and I was just thinking, you know, there are commercial farms that raise and sell different types of game fish, including largemouth bass, walmouth bass, perch, catfish, and I was just thinking, and, you know, some of them are fairly expensive, like, some of them are like 9, 10-inch bass is like $6, but I'm sure, you know, that they also have some breeders, some very, very large fish that can be bought, and if it's known that some very large game fish are in the pond, it may increase the amount of fishing there. I was also thinking that there could be a very well publicized fishing derby in the spring one day. I know that you can get variances for, I think, one-day fishing licenses from the state, the DNR, and if people know that there's some whoppers in there, you know, it may be very, very attractive. The fishing derby, you know, once, Saturday in the spring with prizes, you know, because that's one thing is to increase the fishing utilization of Howard's Pond. The second thing is that I've never been on the hill, I've driven past the hill in Glasgow Park, about a half mile down. in Glasgow Park, about a half mile down Blue Forest, past 896, and it looks from the road like the hill's about 30 feet high or so, with a small paved path leading to the top. And I know that when it's snow covered in the winter, all the kids, it looks like all the kids in the area go through with their sleds and order different types of snow devices to go down the hill, and I'm just wondering that a similar hill in Meadow Park, or even Marina Park, if you cut down a few trees, would increase the utilization of these parks and provide something highlighted in the wintertime. You know, the hills could be 33 feet high, highest in the area, and, you know, the dirt and soil has, has a certain angled repose, so it would look very similar to the park and Glasgow Park. You're not going to get the matter worn, you know, with soil. And if there's any concern about drainage, grass will, after it matures, soak up water very, very well, and at the base, there could be a pipe, a drainage pipe, but going through the bottom, if there's any concerns about that. So, and these parts of the pond, it could possibly be dirt cheap, you know. You know, just something to consider. The third thing I'd like to talk about is the trash. There's always, in every town, certain portion of residents, they're too lazy to carry the trash to the nurse receptacle and dump it wherever they are. And I'm just thinking that high school kids could use a little extra cash, and I'm just thinking that maybe there could be a program supervised very closely by public works, you know, one worker for two students, and two workers preferably perforce means, that could go around, and it could be very variable. It could be half-days on Saturdays, or be every, every Saturday. It could be seasonal, you know, three seasons, whatever it is, you know. Is this something for the town to consider and publicize, you know, and with the good publicity and good extra cash for high school students, you know. The third thing is that in the cemetery on Howard Avenue, there's a very large old elm tree, and somebody told me it's the largest elm tree on the East Coast, which, you know, which is hard to believe. I tried to Google it, and it didn't come out, come up, but it is very large, and Maryland does have part of the forestry division that goes out and actually measures the tree. They'll measure the diameter, it'll freakly high, they'll measure how many branches, they'll measure how many clings if possible, right? And it could possibly be the largest elm tree in Cecil County. I don't know. I'm just hoping to consider, maybe, you know, somebody could submit an application to have that, that forest, or she could come in and measure the tree. I don't want the tree cut down and the rings counted, you know, but I did read, by Googling it, that many elm trees can live to be past 300 years old, you know. Okay, the last thing is that during Fall Fest, I went to the Womacko booth on, on Main Street, and I, I picked up the literature that was there, and, and I asked a representative, okay, specifically, what has Womacko done for the town of Elton, Kelton? And he commented, he had a single comment, oh, well, we prepared maps so that truckers, you know, go around downtown, and big trucks do not go through downtown Elton, and that was it. So I go back, and I, I go to the website, and I read all 36 pages, and it's amazing the myriad number of projects that are on the plate for the town council, not a matter of, and one thing that I mentioned before is the pedestrian bridge over the Big Elk at Delaware Avenue, and, you know, on page 29, I mentioned the FEMA, you know, revised or flood plan, but there are other government agencies, you know, Army Corps of Engineering, the NRC, and I know that the paperwork must be one by one, and I know that at this point that there are new preliminary drawings, but I'm just wondering, the preliminary cost estimates, you know, will it cost $25,000, or, you know, will it cost $50,000? I don't know, but, you know, you know, that, that may be something to consider when you hope to look for planning for the pedestrian bridge. There's one other thing that I had gone to Marina Park, and I walked on the new pontoon bridge. It's an amazing bridge. It was very well engineered and very well executed. It's very stable, very sturdy, there's very, very little rock inside the side, and I measured it with 33 paces, which I later learned to be 81 feet, and, and I'm just wondering if that bridge could be temporarily moved down next to the Delaware Avenue Bridge, just as a temporary bypass until the permanent bridge is built, and I know that, you know, it will rise up and down with the water levels. I don't know how much you would respect flood level waters. Would it just something to consider? That's it?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we will get you some responses on all these. Thank you. I love your ideas. Mrs. Clark, come on down.
Thank you. Mr. Prior, I enjoyed your music.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I'm a little embarrassed to be, to have a point at the end of this.
Okay.
My name is John Park. I live in Elton. I've been on North Street for 58 years. I don't usually come down, I don't usually discuss my private matters in public. However, after reading the article, a Cecil wave relating to vendors, I decided to do so. On June 26th of this year, I had major surgery at the outside of a hospital in Baltimore. And due to surgery, I am now receiving treatment three days a week at the medical building, the hospital. During my treatments, I have met many people with many disabilities and many health issues before a hospital and clinic service. One lady comes by medical transport for Earlville. She's a little scared now. Others come from Perry 25 with a transport. Others come from the cruiser, so they get home with assistance. Often, when we're receiving these treatments, we are not able to eat. Before the treatments, we're sometimes like two hours. When it's finished, we can eat, we're just hungry, we need to eat. In my way, my point is that food standard is necessary. It's affordable, it's time-saving and convenient. Often, when you get off from these treatments, you're sick, you're nervous, you're attempting to eat or drink quickly, but they, they provide that service to us. I have recently been sitting on the wall there, a person's come out, and they walk over, and they just want to buy a bottle of water, and I say, I'm hungry. Yes, but I don't have any money. Oh, well, I take care of that. But I feel I just wanted to say that it's important that they be there for people who are sick, hungry. These treatments are hellish. They take out. You don't see me like this. So the vendors come in at 11:00, they leave at 2:00, three, five days a week, 15 hours. They take their equipment, and they don't. They're not in ice rooms, they don't bother me. So if they sell $50 for hamburgers or hot dogs or whatever, and by the time the coffee comes out, I can't see where they're hurting any restaurants, I don't know what. But perhaps you're the mayor and the commissioner, if you just take some time, you go and sit on that wall, and see the people who are coming out of there and their needs, how sick they are, how elderly, how young. I guess I just want somebody to look at that. And as for my design for Elton, I just hope that Elton can be aware of the needs of not only businesses in town, but people that come in this town. I never thought of it until I got put in this position. I don't need the money, I have kids that are helping me, and I will be okay. But there's plenty of people who will, and I thought I had.
Thank you, Mrs. Clark.
Were you pleased that we reached out, or that's not a question? That wasn't part of the discussion?
We're going to have to, I'll have to look around, sir. Unless you, you're welcome to.
She seems a little upset.
I'm terribly upset.
Mrs. Clark, just as a matter of information, the, the hot dog vendor at the hospital is not even in question here.
That's not the way I'm going to.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's, it wasn't part of the discussion or the problem.
I mean, I've been there for treatment today, and I'm just like this, and I need to go home. My kids told me I was not to come, but I came.
Well, I'm glad you came, but, because I hate to see you continue to be this upset over that particular situation, but it's not even part of the discussion.
But the one in front of the hos-
Yeah, the one in front of the hospital.
But I'm getting in trouble. The one up front of the, of the.
Port house?
Those clients there, calling in for what they go. I don't think they have a lot of money to go to restaurants and eat.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have anything to say this evening? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. God, is he kidding me? This is who we use!